Well, Nancy would also have to go over to the side.
Yeah.
Get the full side.
They were off.
They do, right? It's like all of a sudden I got like Mickey Mouse.
Call to order. This is the Mami City Council meeting, September 15th at 6:15. Can we call the roll call, please?
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Huppenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is Committee whole. President Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Council in front of you have your agendas. If there's any questions or concerns, please raise your hand.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, for 9E, giving the law director the ability to, after consultation, sign development agreements, I was just wondering, who is creating the development agreements? Like, who's in charge of kind of putting them together?
We modified that. I don't know if you saw it on the new agenda?
No. No. That we just got tonight?
Right.
Nope, let me look.
We modified that. I generally am drafting most of the development agreements as they come along.
Okay, and then consult with directors and staff? Okay. Okay? Well, thank you. That helps me answer.
Yes, I had emailed and had some questions with that. Gave somebody a great email. Would you mind, Councilman Barrow, giving us a little bit of an overview of the development agreements in general?
Sure. We have developmental agreements in the city. The purpose are there to utilize and ensure developer does what they commit to. So, since the developmental agreements are contracts, they allow the city to move to enforce rather specific performances on the contract rather than a long drawn-out litigation to enforce what was agreed on in a typical zoning approval. Historically, zoning decisions, whether through plan and commission, or they have been difficult to enforce. If a developer decided to move forward, better yet, decided to provide less than an improvement than what was agreed to, that's the reason for the developmental agreement. It holds them to the fire to do the things they've promised to do. There are several reasons why that format's followed. If a project is coming to Mami uses and what use it is for the format, and that is submitting a multiple set of plans, they're very costly to produce. So, what the developmental agreement does, they work through these things before they come with a stack of plans that are -- I'm astonished about how thick these plans are. They say, "Here are the rules," before you even start, so they know what they're coming into. They don't spend tens of thousands of dollars on forms and then find out that you can't do it. That's kind of it in a nutshell. There's more to it than that, but it has a lot of things that are, here's what the city requires, here's what we need to have done. All plans have to go before the zoning approval, the plot, plan, the administrative, or the larger projects requiring plan and commission to approve. Not every project has a developmental agreement, but the purpose is to get to the finish line faster. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I thought that was a...
And I sent that to all the council people.
Oh, good. I'm glad to hear that.
When did you send that?
Today, about an hour or so ago.
Oh, and say hi to me.
If I could piggyback on that.
Sure.
I've been in on a number of these discussions with potential developers, actually have one this week as well. So, it's just an informal discussion about what they're interested in, what they think they plan on doing, what they think they're willing to invest, and then the city's response as to, well, this is what the zoning laws are, this is what you're required to do, this is -- maybe possibly, if there's anything in the area, the city can do to incentivize it, maybe develop a certain street or an intersection or something. Those kind of things are discussed, and then that helps them expedite and make their decision whether they want to move forward and do business with the city or not. So, it's an agreement that basically says they will do what they're going to do and that we're going to do what we're going to do. Many times, those discussions are before they even buy any land, so they haven't committed at that point, trying to get them to do it, trying to incentivize them to do it, and offer them whatever we can do to expedite it moving along. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. When you have a developer coming in and he's willing to spend several million dollars or many millions of dollars, they want to make sure they know what they're getting and that the city is committed to allowing them to come in and support them. So, that's what basically a development agreement is. It is binding. If the developer actually buys the land and does the project, it is binding. So, what we're asking them to do, they will be required to do it. So, and I actually have one of those this week, so that's basically in a nutshell. Any questions on that?
So, oh, go, sorry. Your turn. Jen has it on you.
I was just curious if we have a rough estimate about how many development agreements we have right now.
It just varies. I mean, there's a couple at least pending, but...
And sometimes they wash right out.
Pending.
Many times, developers will come in and they'll sit down and it's, and they decide they didn't want to go. Here's an example. Culvers, last year. They were interested in a little plot of land over here behind Dino's. That discussion ensued, you know, discussions of what a development agreement would look like, and they decided that was not the location they wanted, so it didn't go any further. That's just one example.
And some of the... To get to where they get, you know, as of today, they take a long time, a lot of planning and like...
Sometimes several years.
Yep. Sometimes they're just disappear.
And sometimes they're, and they have several investors that they have to take the development agreement back to, and they say, "Is this acceptable? Is this, are you guys willing to do that?" So, it's kind of that discussion as you move down the line, and my experience has been it does take sometimes several years when you have a lot of money at stake, so.
Are there any other questions pertaining to the agenda, Councilman Lineback?
I have two. First of all, 9B, which is the approval of posting the HR manager position. Now, does that require a finalized job description before that can actually be advertised? Because the personnel committee has not yet approved one.
I think we're approving the position. Well, we're have the, for that on the agenda to be voted on rather, and they're still working on the finites, if you will, of the job description.
Okay. So, this is preliminary stuff that needs to happen.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay. And a second question. On 9D.
I actually, can, I actually had something to go on. Is that okay? Before we move to something else?
Yep.
So, like, I had gone through and kind of made some notes and sent them along, so those are still things that can be kind of considered while we're going through. Okay. I just wondered if I...
Everything I forward to.
Thank you.
So, on 9D, I'd like the law director or the finance director to explain to me the circumstances of this construction bond for $75,000 and how the dollar amounts for dispersing it, you know, were determined.
Yeah. Councilmember Lineback, this was, Redwood had their development, and as part of the construction process, the contractor removed numerous trees that were to remain on the site pursuant to their site plan. So, our code provides a penalty for that. They agreed to deposit funds for trees and other items that needed to be corrected that they had also installed incorrectly. So, our code does require replacement of the trees that they tore down, and they agreed to make a deposit to cover not only the trees, but also the other items that were noncompliant. I think Matt saw a lot of those issues that we had with Redwood Development. They did perform most of the work. They didn't plant the number of trees that would have been required, and to reach an agreement with them to finalize this matter, they agreed to give us some money to plant the trees that they should have planted, that we're going to plant them in Rolf Park.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I guess I should ask whether there's any other changes to the agenda since the new one? That was the only one? Okay. Thank you.
I either suck, finishes up Committee of the Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to citizen comments. Just a brief explanation. The meetings of council are business meetings for the purposes of discussion by council and consideration of matters or issues related to the business of Mami. The purpose of the meeting rules is to promote efficient, orderly, and productive meetings and reduce disruption at the meetings. Meetings of Mami City Council are lawful meetings under the Mami Code, and no person with purpose to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting shall do any act which obstructs or interferes with the due conduct of the actual meeting. Members of the public are allowed the opportunity to speak under the rules set by this council. All comments should be respectful. Council meetings are not the forum for personal talks. The citizen comment period is meant for matters or issues related to the business of the city of Mami. And we have, I think, a handful of folks this evening. Aaron Collins? Welcome, Mr. Collins.
Good afternoon. Do you guys know what a manel claim is? We've got a couple attorneys up here. Do you know what that is? All right. Manel claim is a civil rights lawsuit against a local government, basically the local government version of a 1983 lawsuit that can sue each and every one of you in your personal capacity. So, we have a couple of questions that I have been digging into. Was there anything that said that Allen didn't have to represent the city of Mami in the lawsuit with the recall election? Because, was it Article 7, Section 2 states, "The Director of Law is a job. He shall represent the municipality in all proceedings in court or before any administrative board." So, was there something that said he didn't have to do his job in doing that, to spend all that money for an outside agency when he's getting paid to do it? So, this is the kind of thing that needs to get addressed. There's a lot of issues that I have been, I've been, I got a lot of birdies chirping, a lot of shit's going down, and it's getting ridiculous. Like, the amount of stuff that I'm getting told is absurd, and I've been trying to take it easy. Still, no one's reached out to me. Chelsea's new. I took, we had a conversation a little bit ago, called Margot today, and she said she'll get, we'll talk after this, but no one else has gotten to me. Like, I am trying not to sue the city, but if I have to, I will file a manel claim and a 1983 lawsuit. Just talk to me. Answer some questions, and I'll get out of your freaking hair. It's that easy. I'm not hard to find. Y'all have my address, my phone number, my email address. There's also another email address online and another phone number online. I am easily reached. I work nights. I'm available all day. Stop being so ridiculous and stubborn and pigheaded and talk to someone that's trying to help get answers. I tried the quiet way, and not a damn person has said anything to me. Not one. Except for Chelsea last week. Why not? Just because I don't live in Mami doesn't mean I don't spend a lot of money and work in Mami. I have friends, I have family, I work in and out of Mami. I spend a lot of money here. Why not talk? Because when I file my lawsuit, what my attorney is pushing me to do it right now, I'm going to take half of that money at least and donate it to all the 4H program, all the Lucas County programs that lost money, like the 4H, that lost money by the, I can't, incompetence of Allen, a $25,000 lawsuit for something that didn't even freaking happen. I mean, come on. Actually, $50,000 against the county and the guy trying to run the burn off. That's ridiculous, man. Get your heads out your asses.
Jim Cavall? Welcome, Mr. Cavall.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. First time here, watched on YouTube many, many times, but I had three quick topics. If I allow me the three minutes, that would be awesome. I'd really appreciate it. First of all, I'd like to thank the gentleman who came to council the last couple of times and talked about the cemetery at Riverside not being taken care of. I drove by today. It looks great. Okay? So, number one here, I don't see him, but number one, I think it's upon all of us who respect the dead, not only the citizens of Mami, but also veterans, to keep our eye on this. I hope this isn't a quick, one-time thing. There's a saying in management, inspect what you expect, and I would just ask that we pass that down through our organization, people that run our different departments, and make sure they're doing the right thing, and I'm assuring that was their responsibility. We hired it out, but I'm glad it got taken care of. Secondly, early in this year, I raised the coyote issue. I lived near Cumberland River Road, and I can tell you, 28-plus years, I never saw the visible daytime activity of coyotes. I raised up the Councilman Barrow, he brought in the state wildlife, and I appreciate it. I think, Mayor, you might have been there for a little bit. The main takeaway was, the state depends on hunters to report numbers of sightings. Lucas County doesn't have much hunting land, therefore, they don't know our numbers. But if you looked at the graph and Gabe Barrow has the deck, but the, the last couple of years, it's off the charts. And I'm not saying, I love coyotes, I'm not saying get rid of them, but we need to get a firm idea of what we're dealing with. And Mayor, I'd ask you, and maybe delegate to someone else, but I think the next step would be, reach out to the Lucas County Commissioners, get their buy-in. I would be happy to sing the praises of what I'm seeing. I reached out next door, and three people reported in three months that they had dogs killed. They were verified. One was verified through the city, through Ken Animal Control. If we get them to wrap their arms around Lucas County and get a 800 number that can be reported to the state every month, we would then know what we're dealing with. Maybe just an ideal issue here, not ideal issue where I live, but I can tell you, they're out there, and I think we need to deal with this. In the harshest of winter, increased populations mean more hungry coyotes, and they're going to come out and do what they normally don't do, and that's go for pets, maybe even small animals or small people. Last but not least, you know, we've seen a lot of crime, a lot of national hurt, a lot of division, but we recently saw a political assassination. And I know this body has gotten involved in national politics in some limited way. This is not to trigger anyone up here or back here or anywhere else, but our First Amendment is our First Amendment, and it's coming upon us, I think, as this body, to speak up with ethics and morals and say, "I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat, it's not right for anyone to be killed. That crosses the line." And I just urge you to speak amongst yourselves in the next two weeks, and I would urge you to step up and sign unanimously, because I would tell you, we're watching, and if you don't sign it, that means that you are not necessarily going to defend this, and that not only are you on the wrong side of history, but I think you'll be on the wrong side of the next election. So, I urge you to do the right thing and speak up for civility and not chaos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavall.
Mr. Hardy?
I was at the personnel meeting this past week, and I have some comments I'd like to share with you. I have over close to 30 years of executive recruiting on both the national scene and the international scene. I've worked across multiple industries. I've worked with many different companies and services. I'm concerned that after listening and sitting through the meeting, that I didn't hear certain things. Working with human resources as I have over my career, I see that there's a big opportunity here for Mami to really grow a very progressive human resource function for the city. There are a lot of things that need to be fixed in our city, some we know, some we don't know, but to just cast out a line, to hire anybody that comes along without a true description is very concerning. You know, Chelsea referenced at that meeting that we should hire a consultant company to come in and do a complete evaluation of what HR function needs to be for the city. That involves a lot of analytical skills, digging into skill sets, career pathing, organizational development. It'd be a great plan for the city to use to hire the right individual. HR really does bring the cohesiveness of any organization, and truly, one of their main jobs is to really mitigate liability. That's important. Some of the things that they also can do is create career paths for people, do skill sets and assessments, and go through and truly look at a department and find out where the weaknesses are, where the strengths are, how to train people, and how to career path people forward within the division, department, or even through the organization. You can go about it two ways. As Chelsea recommended, have a consultant come in. I have another suggestion, and I've done this many times for small companies, hiring an individual that's close to their retirement age, somebody who has the organizational development, the ability to do the skills assessment, the gap analysis, somebody that can look over every HR function in the organization and bring back together again a cohesive way to run the city. It is important for human resource managers to go through, look at descriptions and the duties, making sure that everything is in a silo where it belongs. Those silos are, they pull the information by tried and true methods that have been going on over the years. Some of the HR people out there that are, I mean, there's some real talent in Toledo and Mami. There's a lot of avenues where you can reach out and get these people. I'm asking you to take a minute, stand back, and think about, what do you want the HR function to look like for Mami?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Jackie Miller?
I would like to address the citizens that are here tonight. I'm asking for peace, unity, and respect here at city council meetings. I ask for your understanding and peaceful dialogue. I'm asking for citizens to listen to one another and engage in issues we care about and work to find reasonable solutions. I believe a civil community should be our common goal. We have the right to free speech, and I believe with this right is the responsibility to be respectful. I reject the disrespect towards my elected officials in Mami, and I refuse to let this disrespect go unchallenged. I ask you to put aside any invictiveness, vindictiveness. I ask you to put your energies into uniting and respecting your fellow citizens, and I'd like you to show kindness to one another.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, citizens. Comments? We'll move to adoption of the agenda. We need a motion to approve the agenda as actually revised, as you were given a revised copy.
Move to adopt the agenda as revised.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further comment on that? Call the roll.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Huppenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes. Motion to approve the regular meetings of the September 2nd meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the regular minutes of the September 2nd, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Call the roll on the meeting minutes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Huppenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes. Thank you. That's approved. We'll move to petition and communications, a motion to accept the PNC and place on file. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I will move to accept petitions, communications, and place them on file.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have meetings from the 9th, the Public Information Committee, another meeting on the 9th from the Charter Review, and a meeting on the 10th from Personnel Committee meeting. Anything on the public information? Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you. We discussed looking at a new city website. Nancy has done a lot of research on it, so we are going to circle back around in a couple of weeks, hopefully get a demo of the company that she has found that specializes in municipal websites. We also talked about a sewer presentation, which we're currently working on multiple things, but we think it's premature to do it until we have the final okay from the judge. So, once that happens, we'll set a date, location a date, and it will be a multifaceted, in-person, mail, online, you name it. We're probably going to use it to get the information out there, so everyone knows exactly what is going on. And then the last item we discussed was somehow getting input regarding marijuana sales, and we're looking at a, some type of a survey or some other way to do that. Once again, we will look into that, and then we're going to have another meeting a couple of weeks here, I think, so we'll be discussing all these things probably once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charter review advisory. Mr. Lineback?
Yes, the Charter Review Advisory Commission met on September 9th at 5:30. We went through various items in the charter that may need to be reviewed. The Charter Committee then...
That personnel meeting was just an introduction to the topic. Since then, we have looked into, and your suggestion was good, thank you very much. I met with somebody who's been at this for four decades, and Chelsea's suggestions and just our common knowledge and sense of what we need. We understand what we need. We're looking at all these gap assessments. We're looking for longevity. We're looking for just a multitude of things. There's been several hours that I've been spent on this myself, and a lot of information's going back and forth, and we'll have that at our next meeting for presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further on PNC? Okay, we need a motion in a second to... I'm sorry, we'll call the roll.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Huppenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes. Well, on the consent calendar, we need a motion to approve in a second, and then we'll discuss these.
I've moved to approve all consent calendar items.
Mr. Kurt, will you second that?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. A is a recommendation from the law director to approve a lease renewal with the Mami seniors. I believe this was signed last year for a one-year lease, and they had the option to renew on a two-year lease under the same stipulations, right?
Correct. They just needed to provide us with a notice of renewal, so we're just accepting that.
Okay. Thank you. And then, recommendation from the Personnel Committee just to approve the posting of a human resource manager position. Again, this is contingent on developing the job description and so forth and what we're looking for, so you're just approving the ability to post this. It's not going to happen right away until we get all the other things in place. Anything further on that? Okay. C is a recommendation from the law director authorizing a clerk to return transfer request form for liquor permit for the Marathon VMA LLC to ISHOS Oil Incorporated without requesting a hearing to the Ohio Department of Liquor Control. This is a transfer?
Just a transfer because of change of ownership to the new owner.
Thank you. And D is a recommendation to the law director authorizing the finance director to distribute remaining construction bonds, $75,000, in the following manner. Return $39,000 to Redwood Mami Reynolds Road, Ohio P1 LLC, and transfer $36,000 to the general fund for the purpose of planting trees, and that was discussed in Committee of the Hall. And a recommendation from the mayor authorized and grant the authority of the mayor and law director after consultation with other directors and other necessary staff to enter into and sign development agreements as provided by the Mami Codified Ordinance 123.01 and 1135.08 pending the hiring of an administrator. Anything further on the consent calendar? Yes?
I don't know if it's a big deal. I just noticed it as we're scrolling, but on the liquor permit, Conan is spelled wrong.
That's what came from Liquor Control.
That's what they sent? Then that's what they sent.
All right.
We're now calling it Content Street.
U.S. 20.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll call the roll on that, please.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
That's what came from Liquor Control.
If that's what they sent, then that's what they sent. We're now calling it Content Street.
U.S. 20.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call the roll on that, please.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Hoffenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
And we have ten items under New Business. A is a recommendation from the Finance Director. We need two motions on this, to approve Resolution 26-2025, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Lucas County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. Anything further on that?
No, this is a standard resolution that's required by the Lucas County Budget Commission every year. It is an emergency, just the timing of when the information is provided to me as far as the amounts. It's confirming the millage rates and then the amounts that it'll generate.
Thank you. Need two motions on this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I will move to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I will second that motion.
We'll call the roll.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Hoffenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution is passed. On 10B, a recommendation from the Finance Director, again, two motions needed here on Resolution 25, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by Lucas County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. This is a piggyback to A?
Correct. It's representing the few parcels that we have in Sprinkle Township in the city.
Thank you. And we need two motions on this. Mr. Barrow?
I move to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that.
Call the roll.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Hoffenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion is passed. We'll go to 10C, recommendation from the Finance Director. We need two motions on this as well, to approve Resolution 28-2025, authorizing Mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city of Maumee for relining sewers and/or planning, design, and/or construction of new replacement sewers and excess sewer infiltration inflow corrections, and designated a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency. We need two motions on this, please. Mr. Kurt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move that we suspend the rules and declare an emergency on this matter.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Hoffenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
And we have ten items under New Business. A is a recommendation from the Finance Director. We need two motions on this, to approve Resolution 26-2025, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Lucas County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. Anything further on that?
No, this is a standard resolution that's required by the Lucas County Budget Commission every year. It is an emergency, just the timing of when the information is provided to me as far as the amounts. It's confirming the millage rates and then the amounts that it'll generate.
Thank you. Need two motions on this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I will move to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I will second that motion.
We'll call the roll.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Hoffenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion is passed. We'll go to 10C, recommendation from the Finance Director. We need two motions on this as well, to approve Resolution 28-2025, authorizing Mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city of Maumee for relining sewers and/or planning, design, and/or construction of new or replacement sewers and excess sewer infiltration inflow corrections, and designing a dedicated repayment source for the loan. And for the loan. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we'll call the roll on approving Resolution 28.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Hoffenberger?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion is approved. And finally, we'll move to the Mayor and Council comments. I'll start. I concur with Mr. Cobal about, it was a dark day in our country last year when somebody that has a right to speak with how, the way they feel, basically cold-blooded murdered for that reason, and for no other reason, really. And do agree with you, I think we should look at that, Council should take a position on that, and whether we make a declaration of some sort in the future, I think that is certainly appropriate. Hate doesn't know how to heal or build, it only knows how to harm and destroy. And that was obviously what we saw last week. And I'm going to move to the next comment from Mr. Fiskus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that this Wednesday is literacy on the lawn at Maumee Intermediate. I know a few of us will be reading books to the kids. It's from 5:30 to 7:00. So if you want to learn about the Legend of Rock, Paper, Scissors, come on out to that. Also, since we don't have a meeting for three weeks, Wednesday, October 1st, sorry, 6:00 PM is the homecoming parade. They started this last year. It goes from MIS to MHS, that's at 6:00 PM. And then also this week, I met with our tree expert, Bill, and a member of the Maumee Rotary, and we went down and looked at a grove of Tree of Heaven, which, as you know, is the host plant of those wonderful spotted lanyard flies. And we're working on a solution. It's going to be our test area, so I'm not going to tell anyone where it is, so you don't go down there and mess with it. Not that it's hazardous or anything, but hopefully we can get a plan and put in motion to not only take care of an invasive plant, but an invasive insect as well, as much as I know we all love them. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to double back with one more comment. We were, my wife and I were down to the cemetery this weekend. Her father is a vet, and we're looking at his grave and decorating that, and it does look much, much better, Mr. Griggs. I know we've had discussions on that, and they, you know, they've knocked it out now. It's helped that we drought, and nothing's really growing a lot. We'll see how that goes, but it does look very, very good. So, yeah. Mr. Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Matt as well for giving me the information I needed. I had a citizen reach out to me about some of the flags that are placed and some of the veteran markers over at St. Joe's, and happy to announce that we were able to replace twenty-five of them this weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kurt?
Yes, thank you. I have two matters, both involving Mr. Lineback, and particularly concerning, the first one concerning was that you, Mr. Collier, questioning why he didn't handle some litigation. Good question, and I think most people would have the same concerns. However, I had Alan's job for the Mercy Health System a number of years ago. I was general counsel. He's law director, basically the same thing. I didn't handle any litigation. There were many matters that I was responsible for, I had to supervise, for example, malpractice suits. I didn't handle those. I engaged outside counsel to do that, because that was not my area, and I was too busy doing my day-to-day general counsel job, and I suspect that's the same thing that's going on here with Mr. Lineback. And secondly, this whole sewer remediation thing and the EPA agreement and so forth is very confusing and perhaps complicated. However, we passed an ordinance a couple of weeks ago, I think it was 20-2025, that Alan put together in connection with setting up the EPA agreement and consent entry and so forth. A lot of people make fun of lawyers' agreements, it's whereas this, and whereas that, and whereas, and heretofore. If you look at, if you have any concerns or questions about where we were, where we are, where we're headed with this sewer thing, I would strongly recommend you pull out, you download Ordinance 20-2025 and read the, all the whereas clauses. Alan, in drafting that ordinance, did a great job of telling the story. That's what a lawyer is supposed to do with contracts or ordinances, whatever. And he tells a great story, a great story about this whole sewer thing. Makes it very, very understandable. And I learned a lot reading it in the way he presented, the way Alan presented it. So, take a look at it. And if I'm wrong on the ordinance number, I apologize, but it, I think it was 20-2025. One more thing, I went for the, Mayor and I went for the first time to the farmer's market. Unfortunately, the previous, all the previous Wednesdays, we had a Standing Family thing going on, and this past Wednesday, we did not, so we went. It was a great experience, it really was. I was somewhat disappointed, it wasn't very well attended. But I hope as we do this next year and the following year, that people will get to know it, get to understand it, and that the attendance will pick up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lineback?
Just a few comments. Start with a little more lighthearted and end on a little more serious note, but the lighthearted one first. Some of you may be shocked to see me wearing a short-sleeve plaid shirt here at council, but I thought, given how nice it was outside and wanting to enjoy some of the fading days of summer, that I might just go a little bit more casual. You'll probably see me in a tie in more future meetings. Second, I couldn't agree more with Mr. Hardy and his comments about specifying what we want and expect in a human resource manager before we really go out there. There are several of us have access to different sources of information. People have different opinions. Those are valuable, especially when you don't really understand the territory very well. So, I mean, I certainly welcome people who have thoughts on this, but ultimately, the Personnel Committee, we do have to make that decision. But we're not going to make a great decision unless we get good input. So, I mean, keep it coming. And come to the Personnel Committee meeting, please, next one. And the last item does refer to Jackie, Jackie's comment of civility. I won't go into details, but I heard on the radio just today, Supreme Court Justice Amy Comey Barrett talking about what lesson she learned when she clerked for Supreme Court Justice, former Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia, and that was criticize ideas, never criticize people. We are going to have different thoughts, you know, in this community, in any community, everywhere, different ideas. Those don't always get reconciled, but we need to focus on the ideas, not the person. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffenberger?
Thank you. Yes, I will be reading the true story of the Three Little Pigs on Wednesday, if anyone would like to come and listen to that. So that should be a lot of fun. And if anyone doesn't know, the uptown pizzeria place is now back open, opened yesterday, so I encourage everyone to go check it out, support our small local businesses. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Zess?
Well, there's a couple of things that I wanted to mention. I did ask a bunch of questions about the development agreements. I still don't know as much as I'd like to, and I'm glad that we already connected to learn more about them. I think it's important to know what's going on, so if you guys have any questions, please do let me know, because there's a lot that still needs to be learned. I also wanted to mention, as we go forward and we look at some of these, you know, we've talked about this before, and it still comes up a lot, emergency legislation, what should or shouldn't be passed by emergency. I'm going to tell you that I felt comfortable with these things being passed by emergency because they had specific deadlines. As we move forward, I will continue to keep an eye on these things, and as I did last time, agree or disagree with what should or shouldn't be emergency. But just because something is being passed by emergency doesn't mean it is an emergency. It means that there might have a deadline, it means that something might need to happen.